Good evening, the time is 7:32. I'm going to call this meeting to order. It is the regularly scheduled meeting for June 12th. Clerk, can you please do a roll call? Yes. Councilwoman Aaron?
Here.
Mayor Portemblis?
I'm here.
Councilman Fleming?
Here.
Councilor Rohrbach?
Here.
Councilman Soltis?
Yeah.
Councilor Wright?
Here.
Mayor Greif? I'm here, thank you. The invocation and pledge this evening will be led by Councilman Fleming. I invite you to stand.
Dear Creator, we come together today to gather in your presence. We ask that you guide our meeting and help us to be open to your leading. We pray that you would give us wisdom and discernment as we discuss the matters before us. We also pray that you would help us to be respectful of each other's opinions and perspectives. We know that we are not perfect, but we ask that you forgive us for our shortcomings. We also ask that you would help us to grow in our understanding of you and your will for our lives. We pray in your name, amen.
Amen.
My life is with just two little flags. Help the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Next up is the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions this evening? Can I please have somebody add to the consent agenda? Call it 7A, the installation of data lines and cabling for the new active adult center? Your Honor, yes, so moved. Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Yes?
Support.
Thank you, motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who can't say no. Item is added. Are there any other additions or deletions this evening? All right, seeing none, we're going to move on to the presentations. First up, we have recognition of National Missing Children's Day, which was May 24th. Mrs. Marsh?
Yes, I actually have a short video to show about. Well, there is just normally music.
It's my favorite song.
Okay, well, that's a long two minutes when there's no sound. I think two minutes isn't long, but it's a long time. So Councilman Soltis and Councilwoman Wright both asked that City Council recognize National Missing Children's Day, which was May the 24th, and show the residents a video about Amber Alerting System and the success that it has had. So with that, we can go to public hearings.
All right, thank you. So next up, we have public hearings. The first one is special approval PSP 23-01 for 700 East 14 Mile Road. It's the motor vehicle service expansion. So, Mrs. Marsh, do you want to tell us what that is? And then I'll open up the public hearing.
Sure. On behalf of Galling Kia, the applicant Frank Martin requests special approval from City Council under Section 10.3296 of the Madison Heights zoning ordinance, motor vehicle heavy and light repair facilities and/or motor vehicle maintenance service facilities. The applicant requests approval for an expanded motor vehicle repair facility associated with the existing Galling Kia dealership. The subject property is located at 700 East 14 Mile Road and is zoned M1 light industrial. Galling Kia received special approval in May of 2018 to construct a new car dealership and vehicle service facility at this property. The site plan was approved in April of 2019 with 10 service bays. They are now asking to add an additional 10 service bays for a total of 20. After the required public hearing, staff recommends that City Council approve the special use request PSP 23-01 with the conditions that bump and paint work shall not be permitted, and the proposed auto wash shall be for the dealership and service facility patrons only and not open for use by the general public.
All right, thank you. So I'm going to start by asking the wish of counsel, and then we'll open discussion. So what is the wish of counsel?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that we approve special approval PSP 23-1.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor, support.
All right, thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. So before I open discussion with counsel, I'm going to ask if there's anyone in the audience who wants to specifically talk about this. And I know that there's members of Galling here. So that I'm going to open it up to the public to specifically talk about this. Please, go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Frank Martin from Dorch &amp; Martin Associates, the architects. We were involved with the new facility back in 2018. And we are very happy with that facility. It turned out great. And tonight, with me is, if you have any questions about the facility or the addition, Bill Galling is here, right at the end. Gary Hull, who is a general manager but soon to be retiring. And his replacement, Brian, who will be the general manager at that facility. So essentially, when this facility was initially designed, and we had it approved in 17, I think, we had in mind the possibility of expanding it. So it was designed so we could expand it with the 10 bays. It was a new Kia franchise in that area. So you have to see how the market is, and it's doing very well. So Bill decided to look at the expansion. It will look just like the existing building, and we're very happy with it. So we look forward to getting it started. So if you have any questions of me, or Bill, or anyone, just reach out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wants to speak on this topic? All right, with that, I'm going to close the public hearing and see if there's any discussion among council members or if the council has any questions for this group.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I just want to say, I appreciate you wanting to stay here in Madison Heights and expanding. And so we're grateful for that. And so it's our pleasure, hopefully it's our pleasure to move forward.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, then I'm going to close discussion on this and ask for a vote for counsel. So all in favor of special approval, please.
Your Honor? I'm sorry to interrupt, but I believe we needed to include in the motion the requirements, the bump and paint work, and the proposal, the proposed auto wash.
Yes.
Special use conditions.
Mr. Bliss?
Your Honor, I'll amend as noted.
All right. Yes?
Yes.
All right, so thank you for catching that. So yeah, so we're going to amend that. So all in favor of the special approval with the amendments, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who can't say no. Congratulations, it's passed. All right. Next up, we have special approval PSP 23-02, which is 201 West Gerard Avenue. It's the event and banquet facility. Mrs. Marsh?
The applicant Michael Kozan, on behalf of Detroit Chavari Event Rentals, requests special approval from City Council under Section 10.3294 of the Madison Heights zoning ordinance, other uses of similar and no more objectionable character. The applicant requests approval to use the existing event rental warehouse space to host small events and banquets. The subject property is located at 201 West Gerard Avenue and is zoned M1 light industrial. Staff finds that the proposed small banquet facility use is compatible with the adjacent light industrial uses and zoning. However, stipulations should be considered to ensure that the use does not negatively impact adjacent residential properties to the north across Gerard Avenue. Potential impacts could include noise and on-street parking. To reduce the potential for such negative impacts, staff recommends that any motion for approval include conditions limiting event capacity to 50 persons and ending no later than 11:00 PM, which shall be reflected on the certificate of occupancy.
All right, thank you. So before I open the public hearing, I'm going to ask, what is the wish of counsel?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that we approve special approval PSP 23-2.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Support?
Thank you, motion has been made and seconded. Before we have council discussion, I'm going to ask if there's anyone in the audience who wishes to speak specifically on this item.
Hi, thank you. My name is Mike Kozan. I'm the property owner and the business owner, and my wife Victoria is here as well. We just came to answer any question that you guys have. We, the building primarily for us is to operate our bread and butter, our actual business. We invested a lot of time and energy and money into the upgrades of the facility when we purchased it in November. And upon having some of our clients in there, the request had come for, hey, can we host like our wedding shower here, or something like that? So the intent of the facility is not necessarily to have big weddings or big things like that. So we have no objection to the 11 o'clock curfew, as it's really going to be for daytime events. One concern that we did have is on the application. We did ask for an average, we said we'd probably, the guest count would be an average roughly of 50. So while we think that a lot of these events will be like 35 to maybe 50, 55 people, we did want consideration to have the capacity set to 75. The facility can't support that. Parking requirements are there. We have ADA bathroom facilities to support that. But we did want to kind of cap out at that number if possible.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this item? All right, then seeing none, I'm going to close public comment on this and see if there's any discussion, questions from council?
Your Honor?
Yes.
On this one, I specifically left off the language for two reasons. So the first, I know the occupancy was much higher than the 50. And as the gentleman noted, I can't imagine too many events that only fit. Like, if I put all of my family in one room, it'd be greater than 50. So would love to give flexibility to whatever the occupancy is for that building. And I also know that the noise issue, we passed, I think, a year and a half ago, a revised ordinance that simply allows for if you can hear it at the adjoining property line, whatever that decibel level that we picked, I think it was like 30 decibel level or something, that's when you were in violation. And so if nobody could hear it, it doesn't matter if it's 11 o'clock or 2:00 AM or, you know, as long as they're not having those types of noise complaints. And so I'm in favor of approving this, but I don't personally see the necessity of the red tape as it stands right now, unless somebody has a reason and rationale for 50 people and the 11:00 PM, despite the fact that we're already managing the noise issue. Because I do see venues like this as very important in today's day and age. Anybody who's ever tried to throw a party knows the expense. And to be able to do that at a smaller venue, something more affordable, this could serve a real need in our community. And I'd like to encourage more event spaces, not less. And so I'm a big proponent of eliminating the red tape here.
All right, thank you. Is there, yes?
I am going to just concur completely with Mr. Bliss. I think that, I don't know what the, does the fire marshal know the capacity for the space? I don't know if that's an available bit of information, but, you know.
You're managed.
You know, if it's like 600, it might be a different question.
Not knowing the facility, the fire marshal would visit over there, and he has a formula. He calculates. But the property owner, business owner can set the limit if it falls below that. So if it can fit 200, and he wants it at 60, we can set it at 60.
Okay. So I think, I think, yeah, as long as 75 is at or below the capacity?
Your Honor? Yeah, I would say even 75. I'm in favor of more than that, if that's the capacity. But I just wanted to know what the capacity was. If the capacity was 600, I might be like, well, let's be a little more circumspect about this.
For us, it's for warehousing. So when Paul came out for the fire inspection, it was based on our employee occupancy only. Because they weren't resting, this wasn't necessarily something we were, it kind of evolved into this use. I can tell you that the main room has two emergency exits that go to, on the north and the east wall, that go directly to the outside. There's a third exit on the south wall that goes into our warehouse and then right to the overhead door. So we just literally upgraded everything in there, as far as all electrical, everything. Paul was really happy when he was there with all the, as far as the ADA compliance and fire compliance and everything. He was pretty happy with what we did, so.
Okay, I think maybe we want to make an amendment, maybe the maker wants an amendment to this, to the effect of increasing it to 75, as long as that falls within the maximum capacity?
Your Honor?
Or some kind of wording?
I made the initial motion without any of the stipulations. So somebody would have to substitute to add in stipulations.
Okay, so then we can just leave it as is?
I'm good with whatever the occupancy rate is that they give, and I'm good with the existing noise ordinance, so.
Okay. Is there any other?
I agree.
Okay. Seeing no other discussion, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who can't say no. Congratulations, passes. Good luck. Next up, we have items open to the, open to the public. So at this point, I'm going to open the meeting to the public. I ask that you address your comments to me at the podium. You've got three minutes. If you could give us your name, address, any identifying, anything identifies you as part of the city. And with that, sir, please go ahead. Your three minutes are beginning.
Freedom of speech. The press is in First Amendment for Constitution for the United States. Staff of 43rd District Court of Madison Heights fear. Give an example. No video recording in 43rd District Court of Madison Heights. This amendment. Mayor of Madison Heights conspiring with this staffer in part because this mayor and staffers buy sexual together.
All right, thank you. And does anybody else have anything they'd like to say this evening for public comment?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just going to grab my notes here, don't forget anything. My name is Kevin Wright. I live at 745 Canterbury Drive. I'm the president of the Board of Directors of Madison Heights Citizens United. And I really wanted to come tonight to talk about a couple of events coming up later this week in the city, big events. One is the Juneteenth flag raising, that's going to kick off Juneteenth weekend here in Madison Heights. It's at 9:00 AM Friday morning in front of City Hall. It's a joint event between Madison Heights Citizens United and the City of Madison Heights Human Relations and Equity Commission. There's going to be a short ceremony before, and then we'll do the flag raising again. Everyone's welcome. We encourage people to come out and attend at 9:00 AM Friday at City Hall. The second event is the next day, the 2023 Madison Heights Juneteenth Celebration on Saturday, from noon to 6:00 PM at Civic Center Park. The opening ceremony starts at 12:30. At 1:00, the Lampir Pack students will perform a spoken word presentation. At 1:30, our live music free concerts start. And we're going to have four great acts. The first is K-Fabe, the People's Band. It's a hard rock and cover band that's going to make its first appearance at our Juneteenth celebration. I think they're just going to be really well received. At 2:30, award-winning vocalist and actor X Alexander Durden is going to perform a musical journey through history. And X has been at each of our first two celebrations. This will be his third consecutive year. At 3:30, steel pan solist Quentin Robinson will perform. And then to cap it off, the Smoke Jones Band, our headlining act, will perform at 5:00 PM. We're also going to have 10 African-American-owned food trucks and dessert trucks at our food truck court, more than 40 vendors at our Juneteenth pop-up, a free petting zoo and pony rides, free bounce houses, and a 25-foot climbing tower courtesy of Oakland County Parks and Recreation. And as our educational component, we'll have an eight-station educational exhibit. It's going to be a big celebration of a big holiday of celebrating freedom here in the city of progress. The other thing I'd like to do, and I don't know if he's here tonight, but I'd like to congratulate Chief Haynes on his retirement. Saw the article today in the newspaper. In my role as president of Madison Heights Citizens United, I've had very positive interactions with the chief over the last two or three years. He's even spoken at some of our events and attended when he was not on duty. One of my first interactions with the chief was at a peaceful protest that I organized on June 6th, 2020, following the death of George Floyd. I remember the participants were lining 13 Mile. And Chief Haynes was out there by himself. He didn't have a cadre of officers with him. And he was moving pylons out into the 13 Mile to ensure our safety. But what struck me the most was what the chief did next. He could have, after he moved the pylons, he could have gone back to his office, but he didn't. He walked back down the line and greeted or shook hands with each of the peaceful protesters. And this made a real lasting impression on me. I've always appreciated the chief's show of support for our constitutionally protected right to peacefully assemble and protest from that day on. So I want to publicly thank Chief Haynes, wish him his best, or wish him the best in retirement. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening? All right, seeing no one, I'm going to close public comment, and we're going to move to the consent agenda this evening. There's four items, the original three plus the one that was added. We've got the 2023 Festival in the Park fireworks display permit, the Director of Public Services, the Cost Participation Agreement for the 2023 LRIP program for Commerce Drive, the City Council regular minutes, meeting minutes from May 22nd, and then the installation of data lines and cabling for the new active adult center. Is there, can I get a motion from council to approve?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Yep.
Support.
Thank you, motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor? I hope, I want us to just be able to read item number six, the agreement itself.
I'll read the comments since to the agreement itself, because everybody will fall asleep. For the past seven years, the city has successfully participated in the Oakland County's Local Road Improvement Program, also known as LRIP. This program is designed to assist local government units with needed local road improvements. The program is based on a minimum 50/50 match between the city and Oakland County. Since the inception of this program, Madison Heights has received $436,559 in county grant funding. These funds have been used to offset the cost of much-needed repairs on Whitcomb Avenue, Research Park, Tech Row, East Lincoln Avenue, Barrington Street, and East and West Mandoline Avenue. Oakland County has offered the program again for 2023, and Madison Heights has been awarded the maximum grant amount of $87,383 for sectional concrete repairs on Commerce Drive. The LRIP grant will be applied to the upcoming 2023 project for this street, offsetting the total estimated project cost of $237,312.
All right, thank you. Is there any other discussion? Yeah, I would just like to point out that the city needs to approve the permit display for the fireworks. So does everyone recognize that? We are the city, but we still need to get permission. So with that, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who can't say no. Motion carries, consent agenda is approved. Next up, we have reports. First is from the city manager, confirmation of deputy city manager, an appointment as acting city manager, and the city manager's absence.
Yes, with the retirement of Deputy City Manager Police Chief Cory Haynes on June 30th, the deputy city manager role will be vacant. This role is not a different position in the city, but rather an assignment typically given to a department head that will assist in the leadership. I have appointed Cheryl Rotman to serve as the deputy city manager and city clerk. She's served as city clerk since 2014. She oversees elections, FOIA's, ordinance amendments, and codification process, and works regularly with all of you on City Council. She brings over 20 years of experience in local government, including a community development and planning background to this new role. She also has focused her education and training on municipal management. She has a Master's of Public Administration from Wayne State, a Bachelor's of Art in Political Science from the University of Michigan. And Cheryl was also a graduate of the first class of the Michigan Municipal League Municipal Leadership Program, which is known as 1650. In the past, when the city manager was unavailable for various reasons, the deputy would be named acting city manager in my absence. According to our city charter, the city council would have to appoint the acting city manager for these periods. To avoid having an agenda item each time I take a day off, I recommend City Council confirm my appointment of Cheryl Rotman as deputy city manager, city clerk, and appoint her to serve as acting city manager in my temporary absences as assigned by the city manager. Of course, if there was anything long-term, that would be up to council to take that on.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that we confirm the appointment of Cheryl Rotman as deputy city manager, city clerk, and appoint her as acting city manager during any temporary absence of the city manager from the city.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor, all support.
The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor? I just want to say that I think it's a great choice. We all know Cheryl works hard and does such an amazing job in our elections and all the things that we see every day. So I believe you've made a good choice, so thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion?
Your Honor? Just, do you want to go and grab a coffee so she can be acting for five minutes? No, in all seriousness, no, congratulations, well deserved.
Any other discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who can't say no. Motion carries, congratulations. All right, next up, from the CED Director, amendment number two to the Madison Center Owner LLC Development Agreement.
City Council approved the Brownfield Plan for the Madison Center Owner LLC, which included a development agreement meant to ensure the project was completed promptly. The development agreement required that the developer make an investment in the property of at least $17.6 million, and that they complete all of the site plan requirements and activities identified in the conceptional site plan included in the development agreement. Staff has been provided documentation showing that the investment has exceeded the $17.6 million, but the developer has not completed the second outlaw building as originally proposed. While the developer has acknowledged that the second outlaw has not been developed, they are asking City Council to approve this second and final amendment to the proposed agreement to satisfy the development agreement requirements. Based on the total investment exceeding the original $17.6 million, staff recommends that City Council approve and authorize the mayor to sign the proposed second and final amendment to the development agreement for the approved Brownfield Plan for 29101 John R. Road.
And Billy Gershison is here tonight from the developer, if you have any questions for him as well.
Thank you. Is, what is the wish of council?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I make a motion that staff recommends that the city council approve the authorize the mayor to sign the proposed second and final amendment to the development agreement for the approved Brownfield Plan for 29101 John R. Road.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor, I will support.
Thank you. A motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Got it.
Yes.
Just that this project's been really good for the city, so I'm excited to see it continue and to take this action. I support it.
All right, any other discussion? Comments? All right, seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against, say no. Motion carries. Okay. Next up, we have from the Madison Heights Hazel Park Chamber, a request for a beer tent at Trail Tunes. Mrs. Marsh?
Yes, the Arts Board is interested in allowing a beer tent for the 2023 Trail Tunes Event and has partnered with the nonprofit Madison Heights Hazel Park Chamber to apply for a temporary special event liquor license. This application requires the approval of a resolution by city council. This event will follow all event requirements, including fencing off the tent space and monitoring who receives service. In addition, the city will require a special temporary liquor event insurance rider to reduce the city's liability risk. This is being considered on a trial basis. Pending this being successful, we may consider allowing beer tents at other events hosted in the future. At the recommendation of the Arts Board, staff and I request that city council approve a resolution authorizing this one-time liquor sales event for the 2023 Trail Tunes Event on September the 9th, 2023.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that we approve the resolution authorizing a one-time liquor sales event for the 2023 Trail Tunes Festival on September 9th, 2023.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Yes. All support. Okay, a motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Just to note, Trail Tunes is fully funded by donations. And in order for us to continue to grow this festival, we have to find ways to monetize the festival without charging people entry fees. And so this is a great way for us to do that. And we're really excited that the chamber is going to partner with us to be able to make that happen.
All right, thank you. Is there any other discussion?
Your Honor, I'll just note that I think it's a great idea because you look at small festivals, even like the DIY Festival in Firdale, and some of these smaller little festivals, that is how they've been able to like take root and really be successful. You know, and eventually, they are able to branch out and have different nonprofit groups also benefit from being able to have different tents and things like that. So just in the future, the fact that, you know, we have this wonderful festival, people are starting to come here and recognize and be able to do something more like that, I think it's good. I, you know, we always wanna be careful about these things, but I think that this is a good first step, a good trial basis for us, so.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Counsel Robach, if all goes right, you can have these at plant sales, too.
Yeah. That's a fun plant sale.
One step at a time.
I think, I think the proximity to the police department makes this really easy to approve and in the exact same site that we're proposing this beer tent to be. The Madison Heights J.C.'s had a beer tent there for about 20 years without any major issues. So we're looking forward to it. We don't foresee any problems, but it'll be a nice test run.
All right, thank you. Is there any other discussion, counsel? All right, seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against, say no. Motion carries. And then last up for reports from the city clerk and city attorney, it's proposal number two, officer's qualifications, the amendment.
On May 22nd, 2023, city council approved five proposals to be included on the ballot for November 2023 election. As required, the city submitted the approved resolutions to the state of Michigan's governor and the attorney general for review and comment. We have received comment back from the attorney general's office that four of the five proposals have been approved, but the fifth approval had a minor issue being over the 100-word limit. Therefore, there are some small change, suggested changes that do not change the context or the meaning of proposal. Staff is requesting that council approve a motion to amend CM 23129 to modify the language to be within 100 words and consist with, consistent with the requirements of Section 21-2 of the Home Rule City Act as presented.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to amend CM 23129 to modify the language to be within 100 words, exclusive of caption, and consistent with requirements of Section 22, 21-2 of the Home Rule City Act as presented.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Support.
Okay, a motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor?
Mr. Burns?
I just wanna note that oftentimes when you send these up to the AG's office for review, majority of the time, they send, send them back for revisions. It's actually really good that four of them have not had any revisions to it. And the one they are sending back really isn't based on substance, but just based upon making sure that it's more thoroughly concise.
All right, thank you. Is there any other discussion?
Can we read the proposal again, the amended, the proposed?
Sure, I can read it. Or, can I read it? Doesn't really... Okay, so now I have to find it. This is basically, this is the one that says that in order to be eligible for a candidate for election as mayor and council, that you have to resign your spot, and it has been changed to say you do not. But, sorry about that. Here we go. Okay, thank you. This one, okay. All right, so in order to be eligible to be a candidate for election as mayor or council member, a candidate for mayor or council must resign from Madison Heights elective office and from, no, that's not it.
Yeah.
That's the old language.
That's currently.
That's what, where's the new one? Oh, okay. Okay, the proposed amendment, all right, sorry, it's all sudden there is one paragraph. All right, the proposed amendment states that no candidate for mayor or city council must resign from their current elected offices until they win election as mayor or city council member. So if approved, the revision takes effect with the 2025 regular city election and continues until otherwise amended.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? All right, seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All against, say no. Motion carries. Next up, we have bid awards and purchases. First one is the purchasing coordinator. We've got the approval of purchase of electronic message board for Civic Center Complex.
In August 2021, the city published an invitation to bid soliciting process for the replacement of the electronic message board at the Civic Center Complex. These bids came in well over our allotted budget, and so therefore, the project was put on hold. Coupled with the fact that the Civic Center renovation project was underway, we decided to look at this at a later time. However, we have received grant funding from Oakland County for $250,000 to replace certain features related to this and also the Active Adult Center. Therefore, with the grant funding secured and given that the city had already solicited bids, we reached out to the four people that originally submitted proposals and asked for updated pricing. It was sent to all of the vendors, and only one vendor responded. I'm proud to say they're a Madison Heights company, Spectrum Neon. They also wore the original low bid, on the original invitation to bid, back in August of 2021. Changes in technology has also brought the cost of this down, so we are requesting to buy a set-of-the-art full-color 10-millimeter display to be quoted at $36,388. This would include the removal of the existing sign and installation of a new cabinet and sign. Therefore, we recommend that the city council approve the award for the new electronic sign to Spectrum Neon of Madison Heights with a total cost of $36,388, and authorize the city to submit a down payment of half that amount, which is $18,194, to secure pricing until installation can be completed, which is on hold until the parking lot work upfront gets complete.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor?
Yes.
This is a long one. I move that council approves the award for the new electronic sign to Spectrum Neon of Madison Heights with a total cost of $36,388, and authorize the city to submit a down payment of half that amount, $18,194, to secure pricing until installation can be completed.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Yes.
All support.
Okay, a motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Your Honor?
Your Honor?
Oh, go ahead.
I just wanted to say, great job again to our city staff for finding a grant to make this happen. I remember talking about it in the strategic planning meeting, and one of the cons of it was the cost. And so, great job to our city staff.
Yeah. Your Honor, I was just gonna say, I'm excited by this because with the full-color screen and the, the amount of information that we can display out to our residents when they come down the newly renovated 13-mile to our beautiful facility, it's gonna be, it'll be a tool that our community is able to use, and I'm excited about that. So, good job.
Any other comments?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Just judging by the way the traffic is, people have a long time to be...
Unfortunately true. Any, any other comments?
You could write a novel on it.
All right, seeing no other comments, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against, say no. Motion carries. Next up from the purchasing coordinator, again, the printing mailing of the recreation brochure in the city newsletter.
In May, a bid for printing and mailing of the recreation brochure newsletter was posted on Mitten. Thirty-one vendors downloaded the bid documents and seven submitted bids by the deadline. KK Stevens Publishing is the lowest qualified bidder based on their pricing at a unit cost of 38 cents per newsletter with an estimated extended price of $5,161, including a 2% runoff to be delivered to the DPS on Ajax Drive. Therefore, staff and I would respectfully request that council award the contract for printing and mailing of the recreation brochure newsletter to KK Stevens Publishing at the unit prices indicated for a two-year contract term through June the 12th, 2025, with the option to extend, therefore, upon written agreement of all parties, allowing for the documented postage and paper increases if the market becomes too volatile, and also allowing for lower-cost production at the city's sole discretion based upon paper cost and availability. Council is also requested to authorize the city to proceed to the second and third lowest vendors' litho-printing and accu-form respectively, in the unlikely event that the contract with KK Stevens Publishing is canceled for lack of performance.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Do we need two separate motions here, or can we do this all in one?
I think you just need one.
Just need one.
Okay, here we go. I move that council awards the contract for the printing and mailing of the recreation brochure newsletter to KK Stevens Publishing at the unit prices indicated for a two-year contract term through June 12, 2025, with the option to extend thereafter upon written agreement of the parties, allowing for documented, documented postage and paper increases if the market becomes too volatile, and also allowing for lower-cost production at the city's sole discretion based upon paper cost and availability. I also move that we authorize the city to proceed with the second or third low vendors litho-printing or accu-form respectively, in the unlikely event that the contract with KK Stevens Publishing is canceled for lack of performance.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Support and applause.
All right, thank you. A motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against, say no. Motion carries. And then from the Director of Public Services, the purchase of portable hoist system.
This is a much shorter motion. So the fiscal year 2024 budget includes funding for the purchase of a portable hoist system for motor pull. This equipment is specifically designed to hoist larger equipment and is intended to, to help out with our current operations, and will be replacing two in-ground hoists currently used for this purpose. From a historical perspective, motor pull bays one and two have already had their in-ground hoist removed in the early 90s due to mechanical failure, and the two other lifts that we have, have, have reached their end of life. Therefore, staff and I request that council approve the purchase of four Mohawk wireless Series 800 mobile column lifts and two support stands as quoted to Equipment Distributors Incorporated of Fairhaven, Michigan through Sourcewell in the amount of $57,955.01. Funding has been budgeted and is available in the 2024 budget, and the delivery and invoicing will not take place until after July the 1st.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase of four Mohawk wireless Series 800 mobile column lifts and two support stands as quoted to Equipment Distributors Incorporated of Fairhaven, Michigan through Sourcewell in the amount of $57,955.01. Funding is budgeted and available in the 2024 budget, and delivery and invoice will not take place until...
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Yes.
While I question the one cent, I support.
All right, thank you. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Is the new Director of Public Services here?
He is not.
He's not.
He's not.
Is there any other discussion, discussion, comments? All right, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against, say no. Motion carries. Then from the fire chief, the purchase of a Sattifin SLR 75 fire engine.
So the six-year capital improvement plan has outlined the replacement of both the department's aerial ladder and fire engine. The city aims to replace a fire engine every 25 years and aerial ladder truck every 30 years. Phase funding was to start in 2025 budget year, and at the end of 2027 fiscal year, funding of $1 million for the fire engine and $1.1 million for the aerial ladder was projected to be available. Skyrocketing costs of the new fire apparatus have altered our approach to the department apparatus replacement timeline. Throughout, therefore, the Internal Apparatus Committee evaluated several vehicle options to identify the type of apparatus that would be improved, that would improve the department's operations while considering the financial impact of the escalated cost. After thoroughly evaluating various options and models, the committee recommended a Quint style fire engine, which was discussed at strategic planning and during the budget meeting. The Quint fire engine actually combines the functions of a traditional fire engine and a ladder truck. It affords us the necessary resources and equipment to respond quickly and effectively to a fire and other two emergencies. The Quint approach approves our staffing deployment, streamlines our daily operations, and enhances our community fire protection. The Quint-style fire truck provides a ladder truck to all fires in the city and would eliminate the need for multiple emergency vehicles on the fire scene. Staff has researched this option and recommend that the city purchase a Quint fire engine from Stefan Corporation before June the 15th. Stefan has advised us that the price increase of 5% to 7% after that date. The committee selected Stefan from numerous manufacturers because of the success of the two previous fire engines. This Quint will standardize our fire suppression vehicles. The city can utilize the interlocal purchasing contract with Houston-Galveston Area Council as we did for our previous fire engine purchases. Therefore, staff and I recommend that council award the purchase of a heavy-duty 75-feet rear-mount aerial ladder from Stefan in the amount not to exceed $1,480,217.53. If approved, the city should expect delivery in 24 to 26 months, which is the time that the money will actually have to be paid, so we have time to save this up over the next two years.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to award the purchase of a heavy-duty 75-foot rear-mount aerial ladder SLR from Stefan in the amount not to exceed $1,480,217.53 before June 15th.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Yes.
All support.
Okay, a motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Just wanna thank staff for the forward-looking view here. I know we talked about it as a part of the, the budget process, and this is pulling forward, I think, a little bit as far as like the purchase agreement. But it's, it's good to know that we're taking advantage prior to that increase in costs coming out. And I'm also very appreciative of the hard work that our city staff has done, particularly as it relates to economic development, to allow us to be able to afford a $1.5 million fire engine without having to worry about an increase in taxes.
All right, thank you. Is there any other discussion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I agree with Mayor Protem, but I just wanna know when we take a ride on it. June of 2025. All right. You promise?
Promise.
He's a man of his word.
All right, is there any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no, motion carries. And then from the city manager, information technology contract with BPI.
Over the past six months, staff with the assistance of ITAC, also known as the Information Technology Advisory Committee, have reviewed our current information technology contract and worked with BPI, our current IT services provider, to revise the contract to include enhanced security features and service metrics. These service metrics include quarterly meetings with staff and ITAC and measurable performance standards with credit penalties. Based on the meetings and follow-up with BPI, ITAC unanimously approved recommending to city council to approve the services agreement with BPI Technology with an amendment including security and quarterly meetings as discussed. Therefore, staff recommends city council consider a motion to approve the information technology services agreement with BPI Technology for one year from July first, twenty twenty-three, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, and with ITAC recommendation, grant the city manager the authority to extend on an annual basis in writing by both parties.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I move that we approve the IT services agreement with BPI Technology for a term of one year from July first, twenty twenty-three, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, and with a recommendation from ITAC, giving the city manager the authority to extend on an annual basis in writing with both parties' agreement.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor.
Yes.
Support.
A motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor. Just really quick, this was an interesting process. So, we've had BPI for many years now, and, you know, some years have been better than other years, like with any type of service agreement. And what I think was really great in this past cycle, ITAC was able to really dig in and effectively volunteered to serve as a board of directors to keep BPI providing the right service. And the two changes in here that were really important, having the service metrics with performance standards and credit penalties, was a very, very key piece for ITAC. And keeping those, keeping them honest, whereas normally, I think we'd be in the dark with what acceptable service levels would be, because everybody can claim the economic landscape, everybody can claim the difficulty in finding workers and all of these things. But, you know, having, having the service provider, BPI, have to meet with ITAC and review all the service metrics, I think puts us in a really strong place to get the staff the service that they need. I'm supportive, and it also gives us the ability to jump out if ITAC and city staff don't see the service that we want.
All right, thank you. Is there any other comments?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I saw BPI came out, it's been, I don't know, a decade or so, a little bit less. Anyhow, when they first came out, it was a little rocky, but they really turned it around. And in terms of customer service, right now, they do a fantastic job, so.
Any other comments?
Your Honor, I think that, you know, it's really great that we do have the ITAC board there because there's a lot of great professionals that we have that are able to use their professional experience to really double-check everything that BPI is telling us and to go over the contract and really make some great decisions, you know, before we even enter these contracts, so that's what I wanna say about the ITAC.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against say no, motion carries. And finally, ordinance two-one-nine-four, interference with police. This is the first reading.
Recently, legal counsel prosecuted a jury trial on the interference with the police department charge. The defendant had been involved in a pedestrian accident where his car struck a bike rider. However, upon the officer's arrival at the scene, the defendant repeatedly lied about his involvement in the accident. The defendant was acquitted by the jury that unanimously found him not guilty of interfering with the police because the jury didn't consider lying to the police illegal under the ordinance, as it's currently written. Therefore, legal counsel prepared this amendment for council's consideration that will solidify what resisting an officer is. This will allow us to hold people accountable when it comes to these types of situations. Staff and legal counsel recommend city council adopt ordinance two-one-nine-four on first reading and schedule the second reading for June the twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor.
Yes.
Motion to adopt ordinance two-one-nine-four on first reading and schedule the second reading for June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor.
Yes.
All support.
A motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I don't know if anybody can clarify, and it doesn't have to be now, it can be in writing before we get to the second reading, but the difference between like an obstruction charge versus this interference with the police department charge?
Your Honor.
Yes.
Essentially, under the city ordinance, we treat them as the same under one ordinance. So, obstructing, interfering, this would also add that anyone, you can still invoke your Fifth Amendment rights, so it's not gonna interfere with any sort of constitutional issues. But if you're blatantly lying to the officers, it would therefore interfere with their investigation or also incorporating, making false statements that might lead to police being involved, taking up time of staff service when nothing's really occurring. The other day, we had someone call because they weren't happy with the amount of time the police were arriving on scene. So, they said, they called back and said their child had been shot. We had officers speeding through traffic to get there to find out she'd just lied because she thought we were taking too long to get there. So, these are the types of things that we're trying to address with that.
Your Honor.
Yes.
Just as a follow-up, so the first line in this is, "No person shall resist any police officer." And that, that language, I'm a little cautious of. I'd like to see a little bit more detail on that because I know physical charges, any type of physical resistance, is, that is different laws and ordinances than what we're talking about here. And what you're talking about here is more of the obstruction, which is the latter, the latter piece of this. But I'd just like a little bit more information before we get into the second reading in a couple of weeks.
All right.
Your Honor. I, I agree. I'm, I, this, it feels like it's too broad of a ordinance as it stands right now. You know, I know that police officers go into some pretty intense situations, and I want them to have all the tools that they need. But I also know that those intense situations are intense for the people experiencing them, and not everybody makes the best choices, but I don't, and I don't necessarily think that it's the time to, I don't know. I'm just not, I'm not completely comfortable with the wording in this ordinance as it stands right now. I'm not gonna vote yes to go pass first reading at this point. I'd like to see a different ordinance and reimagine it a bit before I was, I'm ready to consider it.
Is there any other comments?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I would like to concur with Counselor Rohrbach and with Mayor Protemblis. Just in the wording, I'm not comfortable with it. We're talking about a subjective matter, and I think we need to give our law enforcement, our first responders, all the tools they need. But we also need to provide coverage for just our citizens as well. And the language here, I'm not comfortable with it.
All right, is there any other comments?
Your Honor.
Your Honor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I think the wording, it is, because it's confusing me when he said he was found not guilty for interfering, but we're making a motion for resisting. It sounds like two different things. Can you explain why we use interfering and resisting?
Well, it's partially just so that we don't have a litany of various ordinances. For example, our disturbing the peace ordinance also addresses disorderly conduct and a variety of other nuisance types behaviors. So, this again was supposed to address any sort of behavior in which someone is resisting a lawful order or command from a police officer. Again, this is related to a lawful command. If the officer's doing anything inappropriate, the ordinance wouldn't be applicable. And then resisting and interfering, obstructing, again, we were trying to incorporate all those things. Anything in where someone's under a lawful order or custody of an officer, and they're making it difficult for the officer to be able to safely and professionally conduct their, what they need to do in a situation of an arrest or an investigation. Or also when we have welfare searches in situations where the police are out there just trying to assist in various matters of public safety.
Okay, is there any other questions or comments?
Your Honor, so if I'm hearing it correctly, part of it was the lying part. Is that what you were saying?
Essentially, the ordinance as written has been in place for probably over twenty years. The only addition where we were asking is to add lying so that we could address situations such as false police reports, miscommunications to officers, incidents where people are essentially thinking that it's okay just to lie to an officer in the course of investigation. You know, when they're, and these are all situations, again, when they haven't invoked any sort of constitutional right to remain silent, so they voluntarily made these types of statements.
Right, so, so what about the burden of proof? Who does that fall on?
Well, that falls on, that falls on us. So, again, these would be situations where, you know, we clearly have beyond reasonable doubt demonstrations that someone has provided misinformation or essentially lied to police officers based on the totality of the evidence on a particular circumstance.
Totality of the what?
Totality of circumstances.
Well, that seems pretty difficult to do.
Can I just, so, to help me understand it, so if someone is lying to the police because they're fearful of their lives or their safety, is that a part of taking into consideration the totality of the situation? Like, say, for example, if you're fearful that something might happen to you, so you're just like, "I don't know, I don't know anything, I don't know what happened," for example. Is that what you're saying, when you're saying consider the totality?
Well, Your Honor, I don't think we're getting that drastic portion of that.
I think, I just, I think, it sounds like, and I haven't spoken, but it sounds like several of us, in theory, are okay with this, but there's a lot of details here that we're not okay with. Is, can we have this rewritten, maybe, I don't know if council wants to table it instead or something, just to have it rewritten, because there seems to be a lot of confusion here.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I, I would make a substitute motion. I don't wanna stall this out, but I'll make a substitute motion to approve it without that resist line. Everything else seems very clear to me, and then we can rewrite a different version by the time that we get to the second reading. But it allows us to pass the first reading today, so we're not having to wait the additional two weeks. The lying part is very clear. I think the rest of it is a little hazy.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I would just like to note that I probably would wanna run this topic with the police chief because this was reviewed and approved by him before we were looking at any other substantial changes.
We've got two weeks before the next reading.
Yep.
Your Honor.
Yep. Your Honor, excuse me, so.
There's a substitute motion on the table. So, is there support for Mr. Bliss's substitute motion?
Your Honor.
Yes.
Support.
Okay, so we now have the substitute motion on. Go ahead, Mr. Bliss.
Okay, thank you. So, my first question is, you said there was previously some type of ordinance that dealt with the resisting of a police officer. Is that true?
The ordinance that you've been presenting to today, the only change is, is in addition to the lying aspect, the ordinance as presented right now is current ordinance and everything other than the lying aspect.
So, so if we made an amendment to this, then we would be subtracting from the current ordinance that's in place?
That's correct.
Okay, and then regardless of whatever our local ordinances is, it's still a state crime, I mean, against MCL for some, most of everything that's in here, right?
That's correct. An issue when this comes to these types of matters is whether or not we're capturing the fines and costs within the city or if it's going to the county budget. So, when you write stuff under MCL, and that goes over to the county prosecutor, and it becomes a county matter, not a city matter anymore.
Would you say that all of these underneath MCL are felonies, or are they misdemeanors?
There is, and the MCL, it depends on the, if, whether or not there's an injury to the, to an officer. And if it's an injury to the officer, that elevates it to a felony also. If it involves flight, it can elevate it to a felony. Again, most of these are issues where the person's been taken into custody, but they're giving the officer a hard time. Resistance oftentimes when someone is preventing them from putting like handcuffs on, you know, that's different than necessary interfering because they're not letting you put them in the vehicle. They're maybe kicking and struggling, but they're not really hurting an officer. So, we don't wanna, you know, we don't wanna elevate charges anymore than we, than we need to because, you know, we wanna take that into consideration to the public.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I wanna confuse it a little bit more. I wanna make a substitute motion that we just table it. I don't feel comfortable voting on some part of it. I'd rather vote on all of it or not at all.
Okay, is there, is there support for the substitute? We're right now in this, we're on a, we're on a substitute, and there's now a substitute of that. Is there support for that?
I support the substitute of substitute.
Okay, so on the tape, right now, we would be voting on tabling this, okay? The, I don't like this either, but if we table it, then we come back with something new, and then we have to have two readings on it.
Your Honor, I'm okay. I mean, I don't know what the rush is.
And actually, I think that might be the question, is this has been on the books for how long? Years, decades?
There's, there's no rush. We were just trying to have this wrapped up essentially around the time the chief retired because this was an issue he'd been working on with us. But again, we take as much time as we need to to get it resolved. It's just, you know, we had some cases that, there's case law. Now that we can't charge some people on some situations we might want to, that, you know, until this is revised, we probably just won't be adding those as charges.
Right, and, and Your Honor, and so, yeah, I just see it as incomplete. And I understand that you, you have these, you know, lined up and stuff, but it doesn't make sense then to vote on it if it's only partial.
Yeah, I'm, I'm inclined to table this, to review it. So, is there any other, any other comments?
Your Honor.
Yes.
If we are going to table it, perhaps we should also send this to Crime Commission.
Then we can. Your Honor, when you have a meeting tomorrow.
So, do you wanna table it indefinitely, or do you wanna postpone it to a date certain?
No, so I made the motion, so I, no, I wanna, not indefinitely.
No, not indefinitely.
Then you wanna postpone it to a different date?
Yeah.
So, just pick a date.
Well, the earliest that they can resolve this, eh?
What's our next one? Support of these with that?
June twenty-sixth?
Our next meeting is June twenty-sixth, and the Crime Commission meets tomorrow. So, if this could be added on last minute to the agenda, then, I mean, this potentially could be, I don't know if two, I would think that two weeks is enough to, to do it, so.
We'll do our best to have that ready.
Well, two weeks may not be enough if it's supposed to be going to the Crime Commission because we have to find out when everybody is available and schedule a meeting, and.
Tomorrow.
We already have a meeting tomorrow.
Okay, well, he's not gonna have the revision ready by tomorrow. I can just answer for Tim already. Yeah. I mean, the idea was to have the revised language, I thought, presented to the Crime Commission for recommendation or not back to city council, and Tim's not gonna have time to do anything to it before you meet tomorrow.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I, I hate to make this like even more complex, but I think this also, at one point, the Crime Commission and HRC were actually together. I think if we're, we said we wanted HRC to take a look and make sure things are policies, they're reviewing our policies, might be a great opportunity for Crime Commission and HRC to work together.
So, I would just make a recommendation, if that's the case, that this be tabled indefinitely. So, we have time to schedule these meetings because it's increasingly difficult to get a quorum from some of those boards and commissions.
Actually, need to date it till, I motion to adjourn it until it can be, staff comes back with appropriate recommendation after consultation with those committees because if you table indefinitely, it's dead for the rest of this session.
I don't, I don't wanna table this indefinitely. I, I do think that we do need to make some changes to it. When is the next?
Well, I would recommend that you use the language that Tim just said. That gives us the flexibility to schedule these meetings, and can you repeat the language again?
Let me try to remember. That you schedule it reflective, based upon when the city staff can present recommendations to the Crime Commission, and did you want HR?
It's not up to me.
Did you want the, and whichever. Did you want the, and whichever, and the HRCC committee to, commissions to review and provide feedback back to staff, which will then present it for agenda item.
Well, Your Honor, that should be up to the chief to make that decision.
Okay, so, I think that, I think that Crime Commission, looking at this, makes sense, because this is the role of Crime Commission, and while, Mr. Wright, you're right that initially when the HRC was set up, it was a combination of Crime Commission and the Multicultural Board, but then the Crime Commission was pulled out of it, so I think that if we have the Crime Commission look at it, because this is a police-related, and then once they've looked at it and we have the wording, if at that point the HRC wants to have a meeting to look at it, you know, if there's anything, and of course, Crime Commission meetings, just as these are public, so someone could come, and if there's something they see, I think that we need to do something with it, my concern is that we're going to have two boards, a police department, and a council, all looking at it at the same time, and we need to have some kind of base to start with, so we've got this, and I think let the Crime Commission take a look and see if there's something that jumps out at them, I mean, just sitting here, seven of us, I think, or six of us have said there's something that we're not, we're not okay with, so, which, right now, you know, I think is too many, so, I don't know, I don't know what motion somebody wants to make at this point, we're on...
Currently, the substitute motion on the floor would have to be amended, or there would have to be another substitute motion to reflect what Tim said.
We have two substitute motions, so the last one was by Mr. Soltes, and seconded by Rose Rorock.
Right, that's correct.
So...
I don't want to amend.
Could you put the date?
Well, you have to amend it with a date, or to say, table it indefinitely, so that would be taken upon the wording that Tim said, which gives staff ability to actually do it, so if Tim can't get it together by the 26th, we can do it on July the 10th.
Right.
You agree with that?
Yes.
Okay.
I agree, yes.
Okay.
And, Your Honor?
Yes.
Okay, that we're, I saw this motion, and I would like the HRC to have a, have a look at it, part, as part of this process, I know it seems a little onerous, but part of the human relations part of this is, you know, when I read this ordinance, there are specifically some kind of human relations and equity issues that come up in my mind as soon as I read this, so if it's an idea about advise and advising council, I think this is one of those things that would be a valuable contribution that HRC could provide in this conversation.
Your Honor?
Yes.
First, to make it helpful to the clerk, I will withdraw my other substitute motion for the record, and right now, the motion on the table does not include sending it to either board, I generally support sending it to both, because I value the impact, or the input of our boards, I, we just passed through ITAC's recommendation, and there's a lot of ambiguity in this ordinance that we're talking about, and so I don't mind getting some extra eyes on it, council will make whatever decision we make as a body, but it doesn't hurt us to get the feedback of our residents on it, so I would recommend that we send it to those boards, I suppose we could do it without it being in the motion, but right now, the motion does not have it going to those boards.
Okay, I think, let's leave it without it going to the boards in the motion, but the understanding that it will go to the boards, and I think it will go to the Crime Commission first, because it's crime, and then the HRC, and especially since tomorrow they're meeting, and they can at least discuss it.
HRC is meeting on Thursday this week, or Wednesday.
Oh, are you? Okay, all right, I don't, okay.
If anyone wants to...
And I guess they, they can, you know what, okay, so then, yeah, let's, let's leave the boards out of the motion, this is my thought, I'm one person, let's leave the boards out of the motion, but both boards are meeting this week, so, okay, I did not realize that, thank you, so both boards are reading this, meeting this week, so they can have input to them, and, and then that input from the boards can go to legal, does that? I think that makes sense. Okay, all right.
Your Honor, can we also get the council to send us a copy of the current reading of the, the way it reads now?
I think a copy of the current wording should go to council, the HRC, and to the Crime Commission.
And, just to clarify, may I, Your Honor?
Yes.
Just to clarify, the wording that you have now is essentially identical to how it is now, except for the addition of lying at the end of the, of the ordinance as presented, again, the lying is the only change, the ordinance is now is pretty consistent with the similar ordinances in cities around us, and, again, has been in place for probably over 20 years. Not saying that nothing needs to be revised over time, just pointing out some of the issues there.
Okay, thank you, is there any other discussion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Just, just a related note, if we could also see the, the ordinance language on either side of this, all of the related subsets, because if that ambiguity was in there, I think it's similar to Planning Commission, we're reviewing the fact that tattoo shops are basically treated terribly in our city, same thing with spas and that, they have to get a special approval to come in, we saw that with Goodwill, I think this might be outdated language, and there might be more of it adjacent, so I think if we're sending things to the boards, that would be a good idea as well, send them the complete section, all of the related paragraphs, too, please.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against, say no, motion carries, all right, thank you, and with that, that concludes our regular meeting, and I invite closing comments, starting with Councilman Aaron.
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess because I wasn't here two weeks ago, y'all made sure I got my meetings in, huh? But first, I want to just say thank you to the officers, I did not capture their names, I only saw them out there, along John R. and 12 Mile this afternoon, roughly about four o'clock, traffic was backed up, and the officer came to the scene to help let the geese and the ducks pass along the street. There was a family of 15 that hailed up traffic on 12 Mile, you know, I know they used to hang out a lot at Meyer, but their pond is gone, we kind of need to find someplace to put them, because, but our officers did a great job getting them over there. Secondly, Kevin, I want to tell you that I am truly proud of you and your efforts, what you're doing, I recall when me and my ex were together, we held a midnight musical for Dr. Martin Luther King's Day celebration, and it was at church, and the first thing that everyone kept asking us is, who's going to go to church at midnight on a Sunday night? And, you know, the first year, we had maybe 20 people show up with two choirs, the following year, a little bit more, by the time he and I separated, we had to start turning choirs away, we needed a larger facility, there were over 2,500 people that attended this musical, and it is now in its 20-something year of growing, so never, ever let small beginnings, despite you, would know whatever people say, whatever someone may think about your event, and try to discourage you, the funding will continue to come, and your event will continue to grow, you are doing an excellent job, and I see this event being on the maps of Madison Heights for years and years to come, where people all over will attend, thank you, sir. Also, we have a lot of stuff going on in Madison Heights, on the 24th, if you're looking for something to do, we are having a citywide garage sale, I'm sure someone was probably going to talk about it, but it's from 10 to 3, I know we all have a lot of stuff in our homes that we're trying to get rid of right now, as, you know, my mom always called it spring cleaning, let's clean our homes up and get rid of things, and we have some good stuff, it's a great way to meet some neighbors, and to go out and say hello, and, you know, there's three different ways that you can sign up, if you just go to madisonheights.org, send your address to DPS, so they'll know that you have your garage sale going, and you can sell some nice items. Also, Lamphier High School, you know, school is out, and one of the concerns a lot of times that parents have is, how do you feed the kids? You know, I always laugh, and I'm sure Emily will, will agree with me, I want my son to have that same stomach he had in school, where he didn't need 25 snacks, you know, Quinn knows, three snacks was good, and you had to wait to snack time, but for some reason, food just become more prevalent, but the summer feeding program is back at Lamphier High School this year, and they're going to be having free breakfast and lunch for anyone ages zero to 18 years of age, and others with special needs up to the age of 26, no ID is required, so that does mean that you do not have to be a Lamphier High School student, adult meals are also available to purchase for breakfast, the price is $3.50, lunch is $5.25, the times are 7:30 to 10 for breakfast, and 11 to 12 for lunch, and this will be starting next Monday, June 19th, going all the way through to August 3rd, and they'll be closed during the holiday weekend, so July 3rd through the 6th, and finally, Happy Father's Day to all the dads up here, you know, I'm one of those little girls, I always say, how do people go without their dad? I lost my dad when I was 10 years old, you know, yeah, anyway, Happy Father's Day to all of you, being a dad and having a dad in your life, every little girl needs, and you guys are some remarkable dads, I saw your work, and I see you all, that's all.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson?
Yes, Your Honor, obviously, we're grating on a curve, so. I'm, I'm going to keep it short tonight, it's already pretty late, I'm wearing my, my Juneteenth shirt tonight, want to encourage everybody to come out, support the festival, I'll be wearing this in Civic Center Park at the festival, so come, come find the councilmen in the bright orange shirt, and say hello, please, I'm also appreciative of my peers for allowing the Trail Tunes beer tent, I hope you will come out and, and have a glass with me, it should be a good time, lots of great live music in the city between Juneteenth and our festival in the park, and Trail Tunes, we've got a lot of great live music, and that's something that shouldn't be taken for granted, after we lived through COVID where it didn't exist, so, I'm really looking forward to this year, that's it, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Wright.
That's awesome, actually, a beer tent is a fantastic idea, and earlier, last week or the previous week, I attended Madison's Carnival, and they had a beer tent, and it was phenomenal, it was phenomenal how they had the entire event laid out, it was secure, it was safe, it was fun, so I think that if you guys need an example of how to do it, Madison Schools did a fantastic job of it, we also had the, our, was it Third Annual Art and Pride Event, which was fantastic, I got to be in my happy place, which is on the grill, so, I think I saw a little bit of all of council out there, for the most part, just being a part of the community, and enjoying it, and getting a little bit of art and culture, so I think that that was very cool, and that was a joint venture between HRC and Arts Board, so it was awesome to see both boards there, representing, kind of doing their thing, I, too, look forward to Juneteenth, you know, Kevin, you guys have done fantastic, I'll, as the chair of the HRC, I remember we were just literally trying to fight just to have it.
I'm not sure I understand.
Siri, I'll explain it to you later, but I remember we were just, literally just trying to, like, put it together, and like, the way it's grown is fantastic, I know that you guys are going to make a fantastic show, I look forward to participating, I encourage everyone to come out to the flag raising, as Kevin talked about, and just come out to the event, and understand, like, since the beginning of this thing, all we've ever talked about was this being an event for everyone, in the past, it was a concern that it wasn't for the entire community, no, it's for the entire community, and I'm glad to see Mayor Pro Tem Bliss embracing it, and everyone embracing it, and I hope that it just continues to do better from here, including with Siri's permission, so, two final things I wanted to talk about, I had shared a few weeks back posts about a presentation I went to at the Madison Schools, from the Oakland Community Health Network, I know that it's been talked about here, I know Councilman Fleming talked about talking to them, I know Toya talked about talking to them, and I know that it's very important to the mayor, and I guess, this is something that I think doesn't need to be an individual project, so many times we talk about what we're going to do, and I just want to ask staff to check into a mental health task force, similar to the Charter Commission we put together, that is not temporary, that perhaps meets once a quarter, that can provide and pool together resources, this is going to be one of those things where it can't be an individual person's project, it has to be something we take on as a city, just like now, we're embracing Juneteenth as a city, and as we, we've embraced other things in the past, so, I look forward to that, and I look forward to seeing everyone at festival at the park, so, come on out, see some fireworks, come to, the Juneteenth is a fantastic connection between the two, to celebrate the liberation and freedom of this country, of citizens of this country, of immigrants to this country who were not brought here by choice, to the celebration of independence and freedom and liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, so come out to both, enjoy the music, enjoy the company, and that's all I have for today.
Thank you, Mr. Burns?
No, no report from the legal department tonight.
All right, thank you. Ms. Marsh?
Just a few things, congratulations to the Police Department and the Crime Commission on the back rodeo, I'm super glad we got rained this weekend, but glad it didn't happen on Saturday, also, on June the 26th, we are going to be dedicating the Monroe Pavilion to former Councilman Bob Geddings, or should say the late Councilman Bob Geddings, that'll be at 5:30 on Monday, June the 26th, that's before the next City Council meeting, and also, congratulations and thank you to Cheryl on being appointed the deputy city manager, and congratulations to Cory on his retirement, I think, I've been working with Cheryl for many years now, but I'm really looking forward to having her serve as my deputy.
All right, thank you, Ms. Robbins? It seemed to be clerk, deputy.
Thank you, clerk. I just wanted to update everybody, that the state is currently working to codify the proposal 22-2 voting amendment that the citizens approved last November, the most impactful difference will be the implementation of 90s or early voting, we're not quite sure how that's going to be working yet, but we're hoping to have more information regarding this towards the end of this month, or the end of July, and I will keep everybody in the residence informed, and I just wanted to thank council for their support in my appointment, and thank city manager Marsh for her confidence in me, and I will continue to work to the best of my ability for the city, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robbins.
Real quick, I wanted to say thank you to everybody who came out for the plant sale, even though we didn't have a beer tent, we did have, have over $6,000 in sales at that event, so, it's not all profit, we have to pay for some other things, but it's over $6,000, so people came out and spent money there, we know that it is one of those, one of those kinds of events, lots of people come out from Madison Heights, but from all over the region, so it was great, and all that, those funds will go back into promoting green activities and native gardens, and we did that native gardens grants this year, and I think we more than paid for it again, so we should be able to do something like that again this coming year, so I'm very excited about that, you know, the pride picnic was awesome, the bike rodeo was fantastic, I was able to go to a lot of these and enjoy it with both my family, or my friends and the community, it was just, it's so fun to see people out, like, like others have said, during COVID, not being able to see people, like, for those of us that are kind of extroverts, it kind of hurts, and it's really nice to be able to be back out there, and, you know, kind of feel the embrace of the community once again, so, thank you all for participating in those things, I'm excited for Juneteenth this, this Saturday, I will be at the flag raising, but I'm also going to be at the craft table, the HRC craft table, where we can do really cool stuff, but I'll be there, my shift is from 4 to 6, so come see me, but, you know, also, Happy Father's Day, Happy All Things, oh, and congratulations again to all of our seniors, and most, most everybody's out of school at this point, but there's still a few stragglers in the, in the, like, I know, four corners and still in session, so, those that are still holding on, hold on, but enjoy the summer as we start to hopefully enjoy the weather getting better soon.
Thank you, Mr. Fleming?
Yeah, so the, first of all, the Memorial Day Parade and the event went real well, I helped plan that with Martha Kehoe and Andy McGilvery, and a host of others that's on the Memorial Day Committee, and from them and me, we really appreciate everybody who came out, a lot of happy people that were really happy about the parade being a thing again, I also went to the bike rodeo, the Crime Commission was there... I also went to the Bike Rodeo, the Crime Commission was there, almost every member of the Crime Commission was there, and it was really great to see that the kids were able to get helmets and have their bikes tuned up from the track store and ice cream from the new Frosty Scoop store that's actually having a ribbon cutting later on this week. And so, yeah, and the Pride Event. I also, really great to see people come together and have a great, great time. The, there's going to be, hopefully, the Mental Health Forum from Oakland County Community Health, which is going to be able to help people with, there are just all sorts of things on mental health and stuff like that, that's still being worked on with the City Manager and Oakland County Community Health. And then also, it's now the time for power outages, and, which nobody likes, right? And, but when you have no power, you also have no air conditioning, so some of the places you can go, there are cooling centers or the library and the fire station, and possibly later on, because it'll probably be storming still in September, the Active Adult Center, which is here at the City Hall. And then finally, I'm going to be having some office hours at the library from 10:00 to noon. People can come and talk to me at the library and speak about whatever you want to talk about there. And also, if you want to get, email me, you can email me at my city email address, which is seandeflemming@madisonheights.org. That's it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, so please, everybody should pay attention to the air quality. I imagine fire has run into problems with people that maybe exacerbated with their breathing. You know, earlier today, it was, it was good, now it's, I just looked, it's fair, this stuff is real. You know, if you're a senior or somebody who has compromised breathing, you know, wear a mask. I mean, this is no joke. Hopefully, it'll go away, but it's not going to go away anytime soon. Congratulations to Deputy City Manager. Most people don't know, we're, and I kind of go way back to the Clinton days in, in Macomb County with Binyer and so forth. Congratulations to the new police chief, and we wish him well. And then congratulations to Cory Haynes, who was outgoing, you know what, he did a fantastic job. I can't say more about him. When I really just started, I think it was Mark and I, and he came on board, he did a fantastic job every, every year, and especially, I think his greatest accomplishment was the SIU, where he talked to the FBI and talked to all these agencies and pulled them all together, so that was, that was a great idea for him. Also, the reason I wanted to put, I know it was past the date, but the reason to recognize the issue about National Missing Children's Day, regardless of what day it is, it's, it's important, it's something that I'm passionate about, and I, and I, obviously, everybody is, right, that they don't want to see anything like that happen, but the reason I, also I wanted to put it out there was, back in, before I ran in 2013, there was a huge bust that was going on in Madison Heights, and it was with all the chains of the police and FBI and so forth, and they, they busted a whole bunch of human trafficking. And in that, in 2013, what really bothered me was that they had a mass arrest, but there was one minor that was rescued. So to me, that, it's, it's a serious issue, and that really hits at home, so I'm glad that we can recognize that. That's all. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yeah, lots of stuff that was covered this evening. I will be at Juneteenth on Saturday at noonish, and then, I think it starts at noon, and then, yes, yeah, okay. And then Friday at 9:00, we're doing the flag raising. So I think this is really good, and Kevin, hats off to you and your wife. I've, I've said this multiple times, whenever anybody asks me or talks about Juneteenth, I say, you know what? I said, some guy and his wife set this up, and it just grew. So, you know, Councilwoman Erin, you're whole starting small, but that's really what happened with that. So Citizens United started with Kevin and his wife, and it's just, it's exploded, so congratulations to you and, and the whole team for everything. And for what I know, in two weeks when we're here, we're all going to be saying that, we went to that, it was like the greatest thing, because, and I know based on the past, so congratulations for everything you've done. Thank you to council for all the conversations we had with the special approvals today. You know, there's so many things that happen in the city where it's just unadministratively, which makes sense for so many things, but then there are times that we need to approve it, and even when we do approve it, I really appreciate that we do take the time to go through that. Cheryl, congratulations with your new role, looking forward to that. And yeah, I'm, I'm interested to see how the beer tent, I'm not a beer drinker, but I'm interested to see how the beer tent works. I know I've been to different cities that have had different events, and I know with ours, it is a question that people will say to me when they come for something, they'll say, well, isn't there a beer tent? And I'm like, we don't have them, so we'll see what happens. And yeah, if this works out, then absolutely, we need to, we need to continue it. I'm glad that the citywide garage sale is happening again. You know, that was something that, that I came up with a couple of years ago, it's a great way to reuse things environmentally, and of course, you can make a little bit of money. So just make sure if you want to participate, there's no cost, you just need to reach out to the city so that they know and they can put you on the map. Art and Pride, that was a great event, I went to that, I got my caricatures done, which, you know, I don't think, of course, looks like me, but you know, so the caricature does, right? So that was good, and it was great to see so many people there. I want to say thank you to Councilwoman Erin and Councilman Fleming, who arrived a bit earlier than it started, and they got roped into helping set up, so thank you for doing that, that was great. And then, of course, Councilwoman Wright was at the grill, so that was good. The Mental Health Task Force and the Mental Health Forum, yes, I talk about mental health all the time, it is very important, and, you know, I, I would like to see what we can do with the task force, and Councilwoman Wright and I have talked about this before, about how we can do this, you know, what we can do, and I think that, you know, I'm interested to see what, what the city can come up with that, with that. I want to thank Andy McGilvery and Sean Fleming and Martha Kehoe and everyone else who helped with Memorial Day Parade. For the last few years, we've had the ceremony, and it's been my honor to talk at the ceremony, but it was great that this time we had, you know, people come out for the parade, and it was interesting having it down at Madison District. There were the pros and the cons there, but I really appreciate everyone who came out for that, and of course, our Gold Star Mother who was there, and our World War II veteran, because really, Memorial Day is about, is about her and families like hers. So thank you to everyone for, for all of that. Our next meeting is going to be June 26th, the time is now 9:09, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Good night.[1774.78][1774.78]